College is read the town's public commite rule and will abide by them. First on the list tonight is Heather Klaus.
Good evening. Um, good evening all. Excuse my attire. I hit the gym today, so that's a good start. Um, first I want to address myself. I'm also running as a town council of Indian Trail. Um, and I kind of want to leave off where I left off at the last meeting. Um, when I was unfortunately beat. Quick three minutes. Um, I do want to address again, um, the Todd Barber censor and censure. Make sure I say it correctly. Um, and I would really, really love to put this behind us and start if we need to implement some new policies, new procedures, speak with other, you know, everybody as a whole, you know, unfortunately, politics can bring some flair and some disrespect in our community. And I am asking as a candidate and also a community leader, um, that we start moving Indian Trail into a better direction. And that is working with people, working with our, our, uh, fellow candidates, um, people who are running. Um, we really, really need to put Indian Trail in a better stance and, and doing that. We are in the public's eye and everyone is watching. So I just want to say that Todd, I want to publicly apologize myself. Um, I have had no major issues with you. I've never had a hostile situation. And I truly believe that the staff in that have not either. So I want to make that very clear and put that out that we really, really need to work together. Um, unfortunately, again, situations flare up because this is an election for November. And I think people need to be mindful that we are all people. We're all human and we need to get back to treating everyone that way. So I just want to say that and let everybody know I'm here. I'm always open if anybody needs to come and speak with me. I have a public business that unfortunately is being scrutinized and a lot of lies and I don't agree with it. And again, whether you're a town council person now or you're running for that, you need to have that integrity. When we signed the BOE at Board of Election, everyone needs to run with integrity. And whether that's you guys sitting up there, myself, um, if you cannot, as my mom always says, you have nothing nice to say, don't say anything at all. So thank you for your time.
Dan Schellinkamp.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Dan Schellinkamp, candidate for Mayor of Indian Trail. Uh, just ask the voters to be sure and get out and vote on November 7th. Uh, I'll be a little, a little tougher on the, on the censure action that we saw at the last meeting. I think it was, it was largely politically motivated. I, I believe that, um, one of the council members who's running for reelection should not have taken a vote in it. But because they were essentially voting against a competitor in the same race. And I could say more about that, but I won't. The other thing is of a, of a campaign nature. Mayor Cohen, you've got on your website, I checked it this evening, and I see on your, on your handouts, and I'll read it carefully so I don't misquote it, but it says, um, I'll just bring this to your ten, to your attention. One of the things on, uh, on your webs, on your campaign website. Our tax rate has remained at eighteen and a half cents per $100 assessed home that I, during my time as mayor and during my council terms. Um, unfortunately, that's not accurate. The minutes from the June 12th, 2012 meeting, there was a four cent tax increase that amounted to a 27% tax increase. And according to the minutes, uh, Mayor Cohen, you voted for that when you were on council. So please take a look at that and if you, if you find that to be accurate, which I have the minutes of the meeting, then I'd simply ask that you correct your statements on your website as well as your printed material.
Next is Michael Baconberry.
Good evening. I want to remind everyone of the Political Candidate Forum this Saturday, September 30th, 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. in Shirley House Room downstairs. All candidates are welcome. All of you have a voice. And we hope each of you will submit questions while the public is welcome as well. Do the same. As my wife said, the last council meeting will provide bottled water. I'll give you the product snacks. That's up to you. Um, in regards to item number nine, if you put campaign signs along the road 12 months out of the year, I guarantee DMT will love that grass. I'm talking from experience. They have demolished more signs than I've ever seen as a candidate in all four elections I've participated in. Also, the ethics, code of ethics, yes, that needs to be addressed. Also, social media policy needs to be implemented. I'm going to give you an example. We had a former council member while in council create a fake Facebook page. He used the name John Williams. He had Facebook friends on it, everything. Oh, it looked authentic. Uh, he's at first had posted he lived in Kansas City, Missouri. Then he moved to Ontario, Canada. Then it was Bath, Maine. Then it new trail. The reason I found out who it was, kept misspelling his same four little word. He misspelled the word foul instead of F-O-U-L. He stood at F-O-W-L in whatever context. Then when he shared a post on the trail on his nest of that page, it showed his true location of where he lived. It wasn't any trail that he had put that he had moved to. I won't reveal the name of the city because people know who it is. But again, if we do need policies that will reflect this day and age, times have changed. Also, in regards to campaign signs placement dates, it needs to coincide with the state date. Make it simple. You have to have a PhD to figure out which day, what road you can put the signs on. Make it simple for everyone. Less confusing. And that's all I have. If you have any questions for me, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Sumal, the Sumal, sorry.
Hi, my name's Susan Sumiley. Um, I am also running for town council. That's not why I'm here today. I'm a 19-year resident. Uh, on September 16th, on a Saturday, uh, this event was held here at Town Hall. It was, as you can see, it was for underage children basically. And the way that they found out where it was is they had to RSVP. And then they were, the location was disclosed. Um, at the event, which was finally, um, this, I don't think it was ever disclosed, but we did find out it was held at Town Hall. They were asked to bring their IDs and they had to show their IDs. Now, they weren't with their parents. They were with adults. Churches, schools, daycares, all require background checks when adults are with children who are not their own. Were they given background checks is my first question. My next question is, what does it cost to rent the entire Town Hall and the parking spots in the front of Town Hall? Because they were all blocked off. They had the entire down hall, Town Hall. I would like to know what that cost. And finally, um, there was an invitation sent by the Union County Republican Party. And I'd like to invite all the town council and staff to join if they'd like to. It's on human trafficking. Uh, it's October 7th. It's at the Siler Presbyterian Church. And the little intro says, "Human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery involving illegal use and transport of individuals by force or deception for the purpose of sexual exploitation, labor, or activities in which trafficker benefits financially." "Human trafficking is a global problem affecting people of all ages. It's estimated that there are 25 million victims of human trafficking globally. And between 20,000 to 50,000 are trafficked in the United States, which is one of the largest destinations of victims of sex, of the sex trafficking trade." Sadly, Charlotte area ranks high on the list and so do the areas around this, which Indian Trail was very close. I think probably, um, Mr. Barber and Amber Giddy and I think Gay, you're, you're registered Republicans. You might have gotten this, right? Um, and so, uh, one of the speakers I just wanted to let you know is Eric Chisinski, U.S. Secret Service and Department of Homeland Security. So there's some really prominent speakers there and I would invite you all to go. Thank you.
My name's also Brooks.
I'm the Mayor Council. My name is Clarence Edward Alston Brooks Jr. I live on Ventura Road. Um, I'm here to speak tonight about a need in the community. Cameron's House of Hope is looking for male mentors. Um, if you're not familiar with Cameron's House of Hope is for children that are dealing with parents that are incarcerated or dealing with drug abuse. Um, you know, it's easy to judge these kids perhaps or the families, but we should step up and do what we can to help these people in need. Um, you can go to their website. I'm not a spokesperson for Cameron's House of Hope. But you can go to their website and fill out a volunteer form. I've done so already myself. Um, again, they're looking for male volunteers. Um, and again, I started a program with Cameron's House of Hope for kids that, so money's collected so the kids can actually have lunch money so they can get ice cream and then they can have snack. Um, because some kids can feel left behind if everybody else is getting snack and they're not getting snack. So I encourage everyone to look into Cameron's House of Hope. And if you're a male and they're looking for volunteers, if you can fill a need, please do. Community work is important. Um, I am a candidate for town council also, and I'm out in the community. But, um, you know, we all should pull together to help those in need. You know, I want to thank Councilwoman Eholik for everything she does in the community. I know you worked with Adopt a Cop, Cindy's House of Hope, Hope's Chest, and Pride Blessings. Mr. Gay, you're president of Lions Club who has helped me when I was a single father. So I greatly appreciate it. Mayor Cohen, I've seen you out picking up letters and you had the school badge. What is it? Union County, um, Union County, Union County school badge? Perhaps I got it wrong for giving, but I've seen you out there. Um, but nevertheless, um, this is just my call to say, please, help the community. Uh, there are people in need. And again, there's no reason to judge people. You don't know what they went through. Um, and everybody doesn't have the biggest house. Everyone doesn't drive the fanciest car. And, uh, we should do everything we can to help. Thank you very much.
Brings us to council feedback. Anybody, um, any council feedback?
Just want to address the censor. We showed evidence. Believe me, it was a fraction of what's been done over the past few months. But it was warranted. Everybody had the opportunity to see the evidence. It's a shame what has done, been done to the folks in this town and the, the stress and concern that it created when it was a study and we had not voted on anything. So it was warranted and we do need rules of ethics. This council needs to conduct itself in a more professional manner. And we need to, uh, we need to come up with policies that will prevent us from happening again. And it's a shame somebody has to be censored, but it needs to be done. Thank you.
You have anything else? Just have one thing to say, Mr. Schellinkamp. You are correct. It's been 11 plus years since the, uh, the town has raised taxes, not 12. Um, and if it says 12 on there, then it's my mistake that it's, that it's got 12. You said 12, since 12 years. So it's been 11 years, uh, I think 11 plus years. Yes. Oh, yeah, right. Okay. I didn't know you had your hand right.
Mr. Alston Brooks, are you still on Rotary?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Since you were here, I did, you didn't mention, I just want to tell everybody the Rotary fundraiser drawdown on October 14th. And you can call any Rotary member and get tickets, correct? Y'all still got tickets?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I just want to let everybody know that. It's on October 14th, correct, at the Union County Ag Building?
That is right.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
That's okay. No, I just wanted to say it's been 11 plus years since, uh, since the tax increase. Uh, since that tax increase in 2012. It's 2023 now. So it's been over 11 years. No, I know. I'm, I'm, I'm just, just, just throwing that out there. And I think we also had a barn referendum for, for, uh, for the parks at that same time that people voted yes on. So, um, uh, they chose to take money and build parks. But anyway, my mistake. If it's been 11 plus years and not 12, it shouldn't be on mine and I apologize if it's on there. So moving right along, law enforcement. Captain Hunter.
I just want to say, uh, Mayor and Council, no news is good news again. Uh, we've had a pretty busy couple of weeks, but nothing, nothing too exciting. And that's what we like in our profession. Uh, I would say, Mr. Mayor, you talked about Joe. He's actually kind of a, a neighbor of mine. And it never fails when I'm out cutting the grass, he's got to come by and wait. He stopped the other day and was grinning like a mule in Breyers. And he was pointing up his little American flag in his vehicle and he was pointing at it and I'm like, what are you pointing at? I don't understand. He goes, "I made it. I made it. I'm an American citizen." I didn't know he wasn't, but he was, he was, he was very, very happy. And I, like I said, when you mentioned that, I couldn't, I couldn't help but grin a little bit myself. But, uh, like I said, uh, no news is good news. So, um, we'll hopefully keep that going. You guys have any questions for me? Good. I don't have to make any, you know.
On the, uh, Rabies Clinic, is this Saturday, the 30th, on animal?
I've had my shots. I may not, well, I have too.
But do you know where he is? No, you can go to the site. I, I just, do you know where he is? Okay. I know it says Saturday, but anyway.
You're good at this now, man. That's all I have. Thank you.
Is it Kinley? I'm sorry. I say Kinley.
I, I answered either one. Most of my friends call me TK and it's a whole lot easier for everybody. Hi, Randy. We could, uh, go through a whole lot of history with a whole lot of what's, what's proposed, what has been proposed before, what towns have claimed everything. But we don't have that kind of time tonight, so I won't go there. I've read it down. Tried to be concise and get it done with. Cause you gentlemen, ladies, are probably in for a trip tonight after I get done. And I wrote it down so that I've tried to keep it organized and, and spaced and timed. I think the original intent for downtown study was good. They got sidetracked or hijacked somewhere along the way. It could have been the consultant was not really familiar with our type and size town. Misinterpreted whether the planning department asked for, or someone, the planning department led them astray. Anyway, here we are with a proposal that is extreme in scope and direction. Besides extremity of the study results, it is a straight rezoning of property that was not requested by landowners. Yet if approved, gives the planning department complete control over this area without having to come back to the mayor and council for input and approval of projects. Based upon your previous plan, we have advocated your responsibility of oversight that you elected to maintain. But also looks like an arbitrary decision on property zones is kind of mind-boggling and needs further consideration. Permitted businesses, residency really needs to be honed to a better scale for commuting like Indian Trail and not be a copy of Charlotte. Yet here we are in a quandary that has created a hot button issue with highly upset landowners, stressed out staff. Created fodder for candid campaigns. Side note, by the way, people, there's a lot of information out there. If you go dig into it, do your due diligence and study candidates because some of them really have a history. Won't go any further. There's no sewer available to sustain what is on board now, let alone this massive change of apartments and townhouses. Being the number one allowed project, this rezoning would then put the tax burden on property owners that they may never see a benefit from due sewer capacities. There's a lack of what I call community pluses that I believe would bring people downtown for reasons other than just to sleep and the anticipated apartments and townhouses. Let's think also about the schools. This process is what drastic burden can be placed on them and by default on our county tax bills. I've heard the term we need rooftops to have additional business and services to come here. I'm well aware of what that term is, but it does not need to be the extreme scale of how to hear. Please understand what I say here is not about disparaging the planning department because I do know how hard their job is and appreciate the stuff they have to put up with and the hours that they do put in. I totally believe there is a compromise to the situation. I believe the council should vote no for this rezoning and then using this research data, along with the committee composed of cross-section of landowners, business owners, planning representatives, and planning board representatives, but no council members dedicated to arriving in a desired district or district description that would better serve our town and try to preserve as much quality of life that we can.
Yeah, but the buzz will run out. I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's fine.
Thank you for your input.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Heather Klaus.
I'm going to jump right in because three minutes goes really fast. Okay. Um, first, I would like to thank a lot of our community for being here today. Um, it is huge especially for this. Um, I truly believe whether it's five years, 10 years, or 20 years, this plan needs to be dissected. It's a lot of information regardless even for planning, town council, community. Um, the one specific thing is this was supposed to be a public hearing and now we're addressing as possibly a requested action. So let's put that on the table, that we said we'd wait as long as we possibly can to make sure that we listen to our community. Um, as someone that has been here and has been listening, I have heard a tremendous amount of feedback from our community, not only on a commercial standpoint, a residential standpoint, and several other community members on this standpoint with letting you guys know, this is not what we want. So the only thing I would love to be able to put on the table is if there is a majority that we're speaking on, I would like name, phone numbers, and everyone who has contacted and called into the planning board. Or as a town, on what community members have said, we want this and we want this exactly the way it is. I honestly, truly believe that this plan can really be worked in, whether you want to say town, council, planning board, developers, whatever it is, there's a better plan that can be put in place and a reasonable plan to be put in place and working together to listen to everyone. I have reviewed it, researched it, looked at it. There's a few things I want to put in there and make a statement. It's not only just the beautification of the town, the shopping, this. I have heard numerous amounts from that comprehensive survey that was done, that I guess they're using that to use now for this, that specifically says, "Don't overdevelop." Um, let's, uh, look at, um, having a small downtown feel. That's not what this plan is going to present us. Let's, um, you know what? Let's look at, um, there was just a lot of, I have, it's listed, guys. Go look at that comprehensive plan. Look at all the feedback from people that did that survey. And just read it. Look at it. I, I work really, really well with staff members, but we can agree to disagree. And someone is not listening. And I'm saying this loudly. The community has spoken and you're not listening to this zoning. It needs to be looked at and they really, really need to be heard. And there's a lot of community members in here tonight at the last public, um, meeting, the planning board meeting, all the meetings. And they're saying, please listen. There's a lot of restrictions that are going to put on businesses and residential and the people in that downtown. I think that there is a better way. Thank you.
Patrick.
First off, I want to apologize. I think I signed the wrong list. I was talking about the other one. But it still was concerning that I went to the planning meeting and they were talking about some properties that back up to, and the Sunny Side Circle that are on Independence about being rezoned for commercial. And the reason I brought it up is because that one of the concerns was that the road was not contingent for commercial traffic. Well, I live on Allen Way Road and my road is not contingent for commercial traffic. I have, and I showed the captain in LA, I have 18-wheelers parking and blocking whole lanes on, on both sides of my road because I can't get them to put up signs saying no parking either, uh, either side. And the road is in horrible condition from Independence to June Drive. The other issue, June Drive is a private dirt road from what they told me. And ever since they built IHOP and all them, the water runs now onto June Drive and Mr. Horn who lives on Hunt. He drives through potholes and mud things because the contractor never did fix that road. And I noticed they were bringing about, maybe the town can take over that and just pave, you know, that first part up to his thing. But that was my, you know, proposal is that it's not a cosmetic problem. It's safety. I had showed him, the captain, a picture where there was a semi parked on one side and other traffic on the other side. And people coming off Independence couldn't even turn on our road. And I was also explaining to the, the fire department, what are you, how would you get down the road to do it? And then trucks, 18-wheelers come up from, uh, from Walmart, come all the way up Allen Way Road and go through this guy's front yard just to get out to Independence when they could just, you know. I know you can't say no commercial vehicles because, you know, FedEx and them, they make deliveries. But there should be a way to keep these 18-wheelers, you know, big, huge trucks from making that 90-degree torrent on, you know. I don't know what, they can do that, but that was my main concern. And that would be go along with what the city wants. I mean, you need to live in safe neighborhoods, you know, to, and be able to enjoy where you, what you have. But that's, that's what I had to say. And I appreciate everybody showing up and, and I encourage even Mr. Horn. I said, you, you need to come. They don't, they can't see every road in the city. And if, you know, somebody asked me if we had a homeowners association and I said, no, just me, self-elected. But that's all. Thank you.
Dan Schellinkamp.
Thank you. Um, at, at both planning board meetings, there were three separate three-minute signup sheets. One for each of the actions. Tonight, there's only one. There should be three. I've got 12 minutes. I don't want to talk. I've got three minutes to talk about this point. Uh, and I have to take a few minutes to correct you, Mr. Cohen. Your website implies that there have been no tax increase since you've been in elected office. That implies that you have not voted for a tax increase. You voted for a tax increase.
Mr. Mayor, I, Mr. Mayor, I want to call a point of order. So please, if you don't mind.
We're not, we might have talked about that. And I've already answered your question, Mr. Schellinkamp. I've already said that I said it was 11 years as when, when I last gave it. So let's move on. Let's talk about the, the, this right here.
Mr. Mr. Kinley understands, and the public needs to understand, if you approve this plan as, as it exists, apartments can be built by right without having to be approved by elected officials. That's in two of the three new districts. Approximately 500 acres where you'd be able to build apartments without going through the approval process of our elected officials. That is wrong. I do not support the plan in its current form. Uh, 50 feet is better than 100 feet max building height. It is still too tall. When you, when you talk about Indian Trail Road, which is a two-lane road, and you're talking 15-foot setbacks from the curb. 50-foot tall buildings, 15 feet off the curb is too tall for 15 feet off the curb. There is a false narrative that we must densify the downtown. We all want nice sit-down restaurants. I think that was the main feedback we heard from our citizens. Somehow, this, this plan has been twisted around. We do not have to densify downtown in order to attract nice sit-down restaurants. We're talking out of two sides of our mouths. If 75% of citizens are willing to get in their car and drive to Matthews or Monroe to eat at a nice restaurant, do you think they would not drive to downtown Indian Trail to eat at a nice restaurant? The only thing that would prevent them is if there is inadequate parking to do so. The, um, the fact that apartments can be built by right, but churches cannot in one of the three districts is just wrong. I, I tried to take a look. How many residential units are in the current planning zone? We have the Elan Apartments, 350 units, the Grove Town Homes, 92 townhomes when they're completely built out. Uh, Ardmore, 252 units. Six, uh, and then there are, um, 351 townhomes planned at the town center in front. If we look at what's here on the ground today, by my estimate, there's almost 700 units in the, in the planning area. This is not including the single-family residential. This is the multifamily apartments and townhomes. We already, that is already densified. Those are the customers who will come to these restaurants if we can attract restaurants to the downtown. Uh, when we build the new road, that will attract restaurants to the downtown. When we build the new road, that will attract restaurants to the downtown. We'll be re-enhancing Indian Trail Road. How many units are already approved but not yet built within the planned area? I include the one just past the library. There's 351 townhome units. It's just outside the plan, but it's right on board of the plan. That is more residential that is in this downtown area already. Do not approve this plan as it stands currently. Thank you.
Mike Paul from there.
Good evening again. As many of you know, we've been involved in Intra politics for over 12 years. In that time, I've always suggested, get Chestnut Parkway up and running first. Build that up, it's a blank canvas, before you concentrate on the Intra Road. Wife wanted to go to the CD, Chover and Ward concert last Thursday, and it was a drama-filled evening. Went down one road, traffic's backed up. Went down Intra Road and make a U-turn, ended up going through Stalin's. Same problem's gonna happen if you develop downtown the way it is now. You have a two-lane road, as is stated. You might be able to get some turn lanes in there, but it's still not gonna help. My father always said, you can put 10 pounds of something in a pound bag, that's what you're gonna have. It's not gonna fit. It will not fit. Talking from experience again. Get Chestnut Parkway up and running first, then postpone this plan, trash it, or whatever you gotta do. And as people have said, it's not gonna fit in this area. It will not fit. You're gonna have more traffic, no places to park, as has been stated. And all you can do is people are blood pressure born because it's not gonna be convenient for anyone. If anything, you're gonna avoid the area. It's just gonna be a pain to get to, to enjoy it. It's not about restaurants and being social. It's about having a downtown for thriving, for everything. You know, current businesses are having issues. They should be allowed to modify their properties. Their properties without being punished. They should have that right, especially the properties right here. I know there are some of them are looking rough because of the age. They should be allowed to modify them without being punished. Again, I urge you, can this or either postpone it until Chestnut Parkway is up and running to see what you're up against. Thank you.
Leslie Hoyt. I hope I said that right. Les, is it Leslie? H-O-Y-L-T. There you are.
Hi. My name is Leslie Hyde Paislet, and I live at 310 in the Intra Road. And I've just heard so many rumors. And I just came tonight to hear anything but rumors. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, I'm making a motion to continue the public comments at our October 10th to 2023 meeting.
Yeah, and we're doing that for a good reason. We're doing it because if we close the public comments, then we have to send out notices and everything again, all out. This way, we're gonna do it.
But then the public does get a chance to continue.
But they know tonight, we're gonna do it on the 10th. So, okay, with that motion on the table, all in favor? unanimous. All right, now we can deliberate. Go ahead.
I have one quick question. So really, the issue on why we wanted the public hearing recessed is the ad is a couple thousand dollars. That's mandated by the state. We don't think that that's the most effective way to reach people. So if you want us to notice folks again by mail of letter, we'll be glad to do that. We're just trying to avoid having to put that ad in again. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Brandy. Brandy, you might want to, because now, which brings us, should bring us to the council deliberation for questions. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Brandy.
I'm sorry. Could you clarify what RBD stands for?
Regional Business District. That's the purple zoning district at flank 74.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And then parcel IDs 07129396 and 937, oh, 397. It's mentioned a lot in zoning maps. It's mentioned every zoning map in here. It says two parcels, parcel ID 07129396 and 07129397. I just wonder where they are, where they're located.
So those are the two properties that are, they are currently outside of the downtown overlay and somehow, years and years ago, they were zoned central business district. So we're just clarifying that, that error. Yeah, so they'll still be commercial properties or just, they really weren't ever supposed to be CBD because they weren't in the overlay. And they're along Old Monroe Road.
Oh, thank you.
In the 4,000 block.
And then to build by right takes any discretion away from council, is that right?
So if you, if you look at building by right, the only way they're able to do that is if they can meet every single letter of the law, going through site plan, TIA's, all the requirements. So sometimes those will get kicked back to you in the form of a CZ because they may be wanting to, to have some concessions. So if they do build by right, it would have to, they have to meet all the requirements of the UDO.
They'd have all their i's dotted and f's crossed, and then they wouldn't have to come to us?
Correct. If they met all the, if they met all the requirements of the UDO.
Okay, I'm learning. Thank you.
Mr. G.
I think, I mean, what the nail on the head is in this whole issue. And it's Leslie, Leslie brought up, this is a whole issue here, gossip. And there's been so much gossip that's gone around this town intentionally, and it's been political. It's not coming from most of the people on this council. But I'm appalled at the amount of time and energy that has gone in. I listen and I read, and the stuff that's going around this town has been totally unproductive for people understanding what this is all about. And Leslie, I feel for you. I'm glad you came tonight. So, you know, you're here, you're not political, and you want, you want the truth to be told, and you want this work out for the town in the best direction we can. So if we can get the, all the politics out of this and have two or three more meetings and work out what type of high density or low density's gonna be, how tall buildings are. When I ask somebody to come in here and say, oh, it's gonna be a canyon in Indian Trail, you know, it's ridiculous. This has been done by an outside consultant. They had their ideas, they brought it to us, and it's up to us to custom-make this whole thing. But the gossip and the lies and everything that's been spread across this town is ridiculous and needs to stop.
All right, thank you, sir. Brandy, first of all, you're on your team. Thank you very much. You guys did not think of this on your own. This is a directive from council. So I'm happy that you guys have followed the directive that this council has approved. I've been paying attention to a lot of this, right? And I'm very happy that people, residents, were brave enough to come up tonight and speak. And when people are speaking, I like to give them the opportunity to speak because we all sit here and we represent people in the town. So thank you very much for everybody who spoke tonight. When I look at the plan, there's density in both plans. This plan is actually less dense, has a lot more room, as you mentioned, in, concentrated in this plan compared to the other one. There's actually one candidate who's running for election, for the election, who was part of that plan. So it's good to have that kind of historical view. This is also a 20-year plan. So from your, and I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions. So if you just follow me here for a second. So from the last plan, I think it was adopted in 2006 or somewhere.
2006.
2006. What major development has happened in town from that plan that exists right now?
Councilor McIntosh, a great question. Absolutely nothing.
Okay.
The town center was approved in '05. The plan was approved in '06.
So we've had that plan for 20 years and nothing new has come up?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Is the town, if the town council were to adopt this, would any resident or any landowner, property owner, be forced to sell their property?
No, and that was one of the reasons that we created that third district because we didn't want to create that impact and force those residential properties out because of the tax increase.
And that leads me to a second question. Sorry, ma'am, I have quite a few, so if you don't mind, please bear with me. Can the county or do you think, and I don't want to ask a question which is above the county and asking you to think. You don't know what, kind of what they're doing. But from your experience, let's put it that way, from your experience, do you, um, yeah, I'm gonna use the word think again, but I'll use it. Do you think, or have you seen cases where this district that you created, which is residential district, you added to avoid the tax increase from the town? Do you think that the county will keep, if the county were to say no new taxes, they would not increase any taxes on these residents, these homeowners, I would say, in that area?
Right, that's a great question. So we created that district based on a conversation with the county, making sure that we were gonna protect those residents. That's 140 properties. We reduced it down to 10 that are gonna be impacted in the core. So 130 of those are saved from tax impacts via that third district.
All right.
Now, I can't save anyone from the 2025 prevaluation, but.
Right. And you mentioned the, you talked about a number, which is, you gave a number, 2.89%. Can you sort of explain? And the reason I'm asking this question is not just for me, right? It's for the general public to make sure people understand some of these things, just to have correct information. Can you explain on that 2.89% number? Just so that way we get a really good understanding of that?
Sure, so, and I may ask my GIS guru that came up with that number to come up, but it's 2.9% of the entire town's jurisdiction that would be allowed with more density.
So if we say 100 minus 2.9, where am I?
I do want to make one clarification. The 2.9 that Brandy's talking about is strictly for the core and the transitional district.
Right.
That wasn't counting the transitional residential. If you include all three zoning districts as a whole, that's at technically 3.6%
Okay.
for the proposed plan. The current downtown overlay as it exists today, it's currently at 4.24.
All right.
So we're actually decreasing from roughly 624 acres down to 530 acres.
530.
And so certain areas that are heavy industrial and light industrial in the north portion of town, that don't make sense to be in a downtown overlay, were removed, and then other areas that have increased density were added into it.
All right.
In terms of a percentage, though, of the entire town, it's 3.6 for the core, the transitional, and then the transitional residential. Yes, the residential would have to be resoned to that, so.
All right. Mayor, I think that's the only question that I have at this time. So I may have a couple more, but I want to give the other members a chance.
So Laura, you got some questions?
Well, thank you for asking. I'm pretty set up. Yes, I have a few questions. I don't know what, Mr. Kinley said, does any property owner have any option to opt out of being rezoned?
That's up to council. That's up to town council. That's your decision.
So I mean, if we approve the plan as a whole, then they wouldn't have the option as an individual or a single property owner?
If you approve the plan as it is and the UDO amendments and the rezoning, no. But again, this board has the authority to make modifications before they approve it.
Thank you. In the 500 acres, do we have water and sewer lines that are capable of handling the growth currently?
We don't have water and sewer lines capable of handling the growth in any part of our town right now.
So I mean, so there's gonna be a cost of water and sewer if we can get approval, right? I mean, someone's gotta pay for that. What's the median cost of implementing this plan?
The median cost of implementing it? It's all done by private development, so there's not a cost to the town other than the.
The plan that had in there originally, it was 10 million, was estimated.
All of that would be private investment, though. It's not, it's not money the town would pay.
The parking's reduced by 25%, correct?
The current UDO allows parking to be reduced by 25%.
So this will reduce it by 25%?
It's already that way. It's already existing.
So the plan shows parking decks, so the parking decks would be future of handling the parking in downtown?
That's correct.
Okay. And who pays for the parking deck?
Could be a combination. It could be private, it could be public, could be public-private.
Okay. The 2006 plan, you, well, like it, when you showed up here, it was a height of 40 feet.
Correct.
And we're increasing this with a plan of 50 feet.
No, sir, we're reducing the height from 75 that the UDO currently allows to 50.
Well, if you were comparing the plans, I was comparing the two plans.
Correct. I just want to make sure you know what's on the books today.
Until the plan was never implemented, correct?
So the other plan was just a pretty plan that you paid for that's out on the shelf. Your UDO is what's actually being lived out.
So I just, we were comparing the plans, so this plan actually is, goes higher than the previous one. Because you were talking about density of the 2006 versus this one. What's the percentage of increased density between the plans?
So the original '06 plan was like a pamphlet style. It didn't give any level of detail for us to be able to determine the percentage.
So just kind of subjective comment then, okay.
Well, looking at the graphic, you can see it for yourself.
Because I just wondered, you talk density, but in the two plans, one might be less dense with one smaller, so. So I just clarified that because I got a feeling while the plan was never implemented because it's dense and.
So the plan didn't, the plan didn't have any real life to it? And that's the difference between these two. It didn't rezone any of the properties that are single-family or light industrial. It didn't make any changes to the UDO?
Thank you. That's all the questions I got.
You're welcome.
Mr. G. Crystal?
Can I ask a few comments? First, I'd like to talk to her, who had been presenting this. I heard someone say that we don't want a downtown here because we want to be a small-town feel. I've been through several towns that are local to us that I still get that small-town feeling at the central area. I'm not saying that this is 100% where we want to be at. However, I do think that you can come to a media and where you do have a downtown area and still continue to have that small-town feel. I myself moved here because I like the small-town feel. So I don't think anyone on council wants to eliminate that feel. Another comment that came out was saying that we don't have to have more density, we can just build more businesses. And I am against high density as much as everyone else is. I know we don't need it right now. I want to create our roads first before we do anything, which is wonderful, 20 years. Our roads better be done by 20 years. However, I will tell you, I've also spoken with representatives from other towns that have created successful downtowns, Wax Hall, for instance. And they said you do have to have some density to attract the businesses to the downtown area. It's kind of like the chicken and the egg. If you don't have one, you're not gonna get the other. So I do want people to understand just because we're trying to build a downtown doesn't mean we're trying to bring people. We're not trying to build apartments everywhere. But you do have to have a balance in that core area in order to attract the business that you want to do. That's pretty much all.
The key thing that was said here just a little bit ago was if this plan is adopted as is, this plan is not as it was. This plan is changing, is continuing to change. And this council can make the allowances or anything that this may damage, in person, in property, this may damage. But this stuff of telling people that you're not gonna be able to do this, you're gonna lose your property, you're not gonna have this and have that, that's gossip. And this is a continually changing plan here. And all this, what if, what if, what if, needs to be sorted out. And each individual person has issues, is making combinations because we have the power to take this. This plan that was put in here, we could change this plan any way we want to do it. this plan that was put in here, we, we could change this plan any way we wanna do it. So take this stuff about if it's implemented, implemented as is, just take that and throw it out the window, because we're making changes. And we'll, we'll address what needs to be done, so nobody in this town gets hurt.
Thank you, sir. Um, Randy, I heard something about water and sewer. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, I think I worked with the county, um, to try and get us, uh, went from a six inch water line to a twelve inch water line. Mr. McFarren, is that project being completed, sir?
Let me ask Todd Hunsen.
Is that project being completed, sir?
Phase one, that project has been completed, up to the railroad tracks, but they have not gone on under the railroad tracks to tie into the downtown intersection of Indianville and Indian Trail, that is phase two, so not quite yet.
All right, but the thing is, the town has funded money to get that project done. And the reason we did that project was because, one, we wanted to also create a downtown, but to give the residents in that area access to the water and sewer perspective, the company is gonna have to handle that. Randy, I have a question for you. The current UDO says that building height is maximum seventy-five feet?
That's correct.
All right. So the current, um, I guess you would say downtown plan, nothing's really come from that, as you mentioned earlier. But if this, this plan that's being presented is actually reducing at seventy-five. So in other words, if we do not adopt this plan, council votes and says, no, the height of the building still remains at seventy-five?
That's correct.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Chris, Crystal?
I have some more quick questions, sorry. So I know you said a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, we were able to work. What about the other ten, have you had any, you know, input from them?
Um, so there, there's only one, uh, property owner that's reached out. Um, we had a really good conversation, I believe you guys may have received an email from that same individual. Um, some of the properties, some of the ten we own as a town. Um, and then there's a couple that are for sale, so we have not heard from them, but I'm imagining they're appreciating that commercial upgrade. Um, so with the gentleman who reached out, uh, the email today, we've had a couple of conversations with him, and the one thing that we offered folks in his situation is, if you have a vacant piece of land adjacent to a residential dwelling, if you combine that all into one parcel, then it could fall into the, the residential district. Now, there's some cost with surveying, um, they own quite a bit of land in downtown. That was, that was really the only concession that we could make without just kind of throwing the different zoning districts out the window because they, they weren't in a spot where we could just clip them off the edge like we did with Spangler. Um, so it really made it impossible other than to give them that option, um, to recombine, and then they could be considered into the DTD or District.
And then my second question, someone had mentioned that, of course, we can build by by right apartments. What is the difference in what is in place right now? And of course, I'm asking this for others to hear too, versus what's going into place? Is there areas right now that could be built by right? Or changing the UDO is the reason why that's...
Um, so there are not areas that could build by right now, um, to be completely transparent with you. Um, I think in Indian Trail and a lot of areas in Union County, it's hard to get the political will for a mixed-use, dense project to be approved. Um, none of you really want that on your record when you go to campaign, right? Um, so there hasn't been the political will in seventeen years. I don't see there being the political will in next decade if you're gonna build a downtown. You know, if you make it by right in two point eight nine percent of your jurisdiction, um, then that, that can help build that downtown.
Thank you.
Randy, um, you know, in the plan, it says, uh, intense density. Um, there's forty-three thousand, say, residents in Indian Trail. Um, I'm the firm believer, and if you build it, they will come. You know, businesses come, you know? Um, I support a restaurant right now where it's in a closed Kmart shopping center, but you operate it, well, they come. You know? Um, so I don't get why everyone's saying you have to add some density to accommodate these businesses. I just don't understand it, I mean, that's just my opinion, I just don't believe that's the, I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
So the restaurant that you're referring to, um, those, those metrics and the way they come in are very different than an actual downtown. You know, you're not just looking at a restaurant on seventy-four. You really want the shopping, the dining, um, all the experiences that you're looking for in creating a downtown, the pedestrian oriented. You're gonna have to have a little density with that, if you don't like the word...
We just got so much around this density, you know, forty-three thousand residents that will come downtown once these nights. You know, I just don't, I don't, that's my...
We've had, we've had quite a big population and it hasn't started any development in seventeen years.
Right, I don't think we had anybody push it, you know? That's when I, I ran, I said I wanted to, uh, go for a downtown, and that's what I wanted. And I supported one then for this plan. But, uh, this high density stuff, I don't, I don't understand it. We don't have the, uh, infrastructure or roads or schools, you know, so we're hurting.
And again, if you don't like some of the wording in the plan, this is your plan to adopt, it's not staff's plan.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilor McIntyre brought up the water line from River Road, because over here it's not finished, correct?
Correct.
Now, if I remember, we ran on third on that, the county paid a half a million, the developer paid a half a million, and the town paid a half a million. So if we've had to pony up to get an additional water line just in that small little section, how can we feel comfortable that developers and private funding are gonna pay for the future water lines, like you said?
That's a part, that's a part of the cost of development, I think, um...
That's, we, we could be looking at a lot of costs to expand the water and sewer lines. I mean, as a town, I mean, we did it here, so, I mean, just that little line was a half a million to the taxpayers. So I just wonder where the, all this private money's coming from. And this plan has all kinds of stuff, and getting grants from federal and state and all that. How many of those grants have we gotten so far for this?
We, we don't have a plan to even apply for those grants.
That's what I mean, you know, this, it's all, well, it's all if.
You can't be, you typically aren't eligible for grants if you don't have a fairly updated plan.
I'm just saying, it's, you know, it's all, it's all, looks good, we gotta apply, but there's no guarantee we get it. But thanks for, I think that's all I got.
Mr. Gay?
I've got a question, I know Mr. Farber, a thousand multifamily and apartments from Lowe's to Sun Valley, uh, that's gonna be, like, like I said, a thousand units, who's paying for that water and sewer?
The developers, so generally, development pays for itself.
So if they're gonna come in here and build it, they're gonna pay for the infrastructure, the town doesn't do it. So it's a simple few, you know? And that's, to me, that's way too much density to get bigger than there. Imagine Western Chapel Road, South Road, that kind of volume going across it. I mean, it's, it happens right here at this, these tables here. You know, we vote in high density, we're the ones who do it. If we don't want it, then we don't vote for it. So let's, let's keep all this straight.
Any other questions? I, I have one or two, just a couple, and, um, you may have already answered it. Um, tax-wise, Randy, how, with the two plans, how does this, how do the taxes affect the landowners? From one plan, from the two thousand and six plan to the two thousand and twenty-three plan?
Sure, so again, the oh six plan was really just sitting on the shelf looking pretty. Um, this plan brings it to life a little bit more with the rezonings, and that's where we looked at the tax impacts. Um, we were able to, um, eliminate tax impacts except for ten parcels. Um, the rest are going either from a commercial district to another commercial district, so essentially just changing names and some uses. Um, and then the other ones will transition from, uh, if it's SF one, they'll go to the DTD residential district.
So I guess my, my next question to you was, if you just left it at the two thousand and six level, does that, does that keep taxes, the landowners in the town and the core district, does it keep them from paying more taxes? Does that make sense?
Correct, but currently, the, the, the twenty twenty-three plan only impacts a few property owners. Um, it's ten parcels, we own several of those, a couple of those are for sale, and then, um, Mr. Kenley, that you heard from via email.
Is there any way to help those people, because there is such few? Uh, if, if, if they're gonna pay, be the ones that pay more of the tax burden, is there a way that we can help those people make it more, uh, beneficial or make them agree more to want maybe to, to do something? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we looked at it, we looked at giving them every option, that's where we...
I'm not gonna make the interruption, because I don't blame them for, for not wanting their taxes to go, you know? Because when you, when you re, you know, when you reevaluate, then, then their taxes are gonna go up, so, even though it's few.
Right, right, and I think if, you know, if you're looking at selling, it's a good thing. If, if you wanna stay, then, you know, why do you wanna pay more taxes? Um, and that's certainly the reason for Ashland, that we went into that subdivision and immediately decided, all right, we've, we've gotta create a third district. So the problem with their parcels is, um, they're kind of scattered and they're not on the edges at all, so it's not like we can clip them out. Um, it just, the, the best solution we were able to come up with them was for them to combine it with the existing residential structures. Um, all the parcels had that option. Um, now, there is, you know, some surveying costs that they would have to incur, but that would, um, that would permit them to fall into the residential district.
Okay, one, one other question. Um, I know, um, we're, we're talking about more, more density, less density. Uh, the two thousand and six plan actually has more density than, than the two thousand and twenty-three.
Just looking at the images, yes. Now, we don't, we don't, we can't break that down to a percentage because that plan was just very high-level pamphlet style.
As far as, uh, more, when we say more density, we mean more buildings, I think, more, more structures, is that, is that not...
Closer together, right.
More structures. How about, um, is, is it also more, um, more apartments, more condos, more? What creates that more density? Which plan has more, uh, resi, you know, uh, residential in it?
It really...
How density residential?
The, the oh six plan is so basic, it really didn't get to the level of detail for us to really make that determination.
Right, okay, all right. Well, uh, and, and you brought up a, 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 a no sewer, which is not gonna be very helpful, uh, for, for, for all this discussion and all this money spent and all that, that we've done, there's, there's not gonna be a lot done, uh, unfortunately. Uh, so, um, you know, that, that's unfortunate, because, let's face it, we, we saw what downtown Indian Trail looks like today. And I think everybody in this room would like to see a little something different than that. Um, we, I would hope so. I'm not, not saying it's, it's, uh, it's not the greatest, let's just put it that way. And, uh, I, I love this town, and I think it's a beautiful, we live in a beautiful area. So, uh, uh, I think what we did here tonight was a good thing. And I think we ought to continue to do it, and we, we need to talk about this plan. And we need to, you know, if, if, we, we can keep, keep on working on this plan, keep on working on this plan. You know, uh, we, you, you and I talked about different things. You and I talked about, uh, churches in, in all the core area, which, uh, which, if you wanted to put a, I don't think you're gonna, uh, want a church. Somebody's not, not gonna put a church in the, the very core of the town, because it's gonna be the most expensive you want. You gotta have parking lots, you gotta have it, so you'd have to spend a ton of money to get a big wide church in there. So naturally, they're not gonna wanna go into the very center of the core. But if that, if that is one of the holdbacks of, of people, then let's put it in there. Let's, 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 let's keep the churches everywhere. Let's make this plan, or try to make this plan, a plan that everybody can be happy with, or most people can be happy with. Um, you, you're not gonna make everybody happy all the time, but you gotta give and take a little bit. And our choices are, do we wanna keep Indian Trail, uh, looking like it does right now, or do we wanna move this forward? And I wanna help, uh, Mr. Kenley with his, with, with what his problem is, and I think a lot of that is, is the tax, uh, taxes that, that he's gonna have to pay to move on. But anyway, let's keep working on it, and let's, let's, let's not drop this and cancel. I think you asked a ton of good questions tonight, and, uh, let's keep working on it, and, uh, maybe we'll, we'll come up with something. So with that being said, um, I think we've already made a motion to continue it. Uh, if we're done with questions, we're ready to move on to the next, uh, thing, and Randy, thank you for your...